Good evening.
I'd like to call the Davie County Commissioners Meeting of October 5th, 2020, to order. Given these unusual times with our social distancing, we appreciate your indulgence in helping us out, so, and complying with the rules. So, thank you for that. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us into invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let us pray. Father, we come here tonight to do the business of this great county that you have sovereignly placed us in. Father, we come here to acknowledge that you're a God of mercy and grace and goodness. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon each of us in this room. We thank you, Father, for men and women who have sacrificed their blood on battlefields that we might be free. We thank you for men and women who are called to be in our law enforcement, our EMS, and, Father, our fire departments, to keep our streets and our homes safe. Father, we thank you for a free nation where we can have civil discussion, Father, where we can have civil disagreement, and, Father, where we are free to vote and select those leaders that we choose to lead us on a daily basis. So, Lord, tonight, we thank you for life, we thank you for liberty, we thank you for our families, and, Father, we pray that you give us wisdom and discernment to carry out the great mission that you've called us to. Father, not only to govern, but, Father, to be an example and to honor you in all we do. We pray this prayer in Christ's wonderful name. Amen. You will stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Next item on the agenda is just a housekeeping matter that we need to go over. It's our Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure. Call on Mr. Vogler.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of County Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which come before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted. As chairman, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right. At this time, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Thanks. Right. Next, we go to the public comment period. Mr. Vogler. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, rezoning request from Mr. Linkus. I'll ask Mr. Meadwell to come forward.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, you have zoning map amendment 2020-03. This is a request to rezone 1.6 acres from residential 20 to highway business special conditions. The applicant wishes to use the entire 1.6 acre site for a commercial use. The subject piece of property is located or is addressed as 140 and 146 King Arthur Lane, and the property is further described as Davie County Tax Parcel E771. Included in your agenda package, you see a zoning map of the area. The highlighted area in the dark red is the subject piece of property. Those two address points are, there was existing single lot mobile homes on there; those have since been removed. But also, as you see on the zoning map there, the areas of commercial zone property that is in close proximity to the subject piece of property. Also, in your package, you have an aerial photograph of the site. As you can see, parts of the property are cleared and parts of it are wooded. This area is in an area listed as a commercial mixed use on the Davie County Comprehensive Plan, Land Use Plan map, and is in a primary growth area on the Davie County Growth Map. This piece of property originally was zoned R20 in 1973, and the proposed zoning is highway business special conditions. As the board has heard many times before, the special conditions zoning allows the board to place reasonable conditions on the use to affect or to address those things that one could reasonably expect to occur based on the request. The applicant has stated he would like to use the site for a RV and boat storage facility. Public water appears to be available to the site, but the site may have access to public sewer. The issues to consider, as I mentioned, this conditional zoning. You may place those conditions, but other things to think about are the property's potential as a commercial use, the property's potential as a residential use, the property's location along a major arterial, US Highway 158. Again, if the rezoning is approved, it still has to go through our TRC for development compliance, site plans, and erosion control plans and things of those nature still have to be reviewed by us before an actual development permit can be issued, as well as whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the overall character of the existing development in the vicinity. The planning staff has shown or proposed conditions for the site. These are, have been shown and agreed to by the applicant, and those are included in your agenda packages. We can go over these conditions if you'd like. You have them in front of you, but based on what you hear tonight or what you see, you can delete these conditions or add more to them as you see fit. The planning board did vote to approve this at its last meeting. For the board tonight, the board should consider one of the following actions: either one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve; two, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny; or three, defer the request for additional consideration. With a special or a conditional use, rezoning is a two-step process. The board will need to vote for the rezoning first and then discuss those conditions as you see fit. I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the board has for me right now.
If I read your synopsis correctly, there was no negative comment at the meeting? No negative public comment, public comment at all?
Yes, the minutes were included. There were several people that did come and speak in opposition to the request.
Any other questions for Mr. Meadwell? Okay, thank you. All right. So, this is a public hearing, so I'll ask Mr. Vogler to read the legal requirements.
Chair, as announced, this is the date now of the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 153A in the North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 155 of Davie County Code of Ordinance. This board is conducting a public hearing on proposed amendment to the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning ordinance, on application of rezonation approximately 1.738 acres identified as parcel E571 from residential 20 to highway business special use. This parcel is located at 145 King Arthur Lane. Due notice that this public hearing was advertised and ran in a local newspaper with general circulation within the county as required by law on September the 25th and also October 1st, 2020, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your agenda packet. I would ask that all who wish to comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium one at a time, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposed rezoning. As chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the board for comments or questions. And could we get Mr. Meadwell back in here, maybe?
I just asked him to come back.
Okay. Let him get back in here. All right. Okay, so we had nobody speak at the public hearing, Mr. Meadwell, so now we're back to the board. So, anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Meadwell. So, he just wants to have a storage facility, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because in the minutes from the planning board meeting, one of the speakers said that they had opposition from the noise from generators on the site, but if it's just storage, there should be no generators.
Yeah, I think there was some discussion of, in terms of, and I think you find this most storage-type facilities, it's the potential that you may have somebody coming late at night, driving in, or somebody wanting to work on an RV during business hours or non-business hours, the generator, things of that nature. That's where that discussion came.
And there's a similar facility just up the road from this?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
There's no buffer requirements or anything besides the fence, is that correct?
It would still need, it would still, any project would still comply, will have to comply with our landscaping requirements that we have, just in our general landscaping requirements. It would probably be just like a Type B type buffer, more likely. And actually, Mr. Blakely, that is one of the conditions, that that densely planted buffer would be there along King Arthur, I think that's right, side end of rear property line. So, yeah, along King Arthur and those residential lines there.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, well, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve, deny, or defer.
Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the rezoning.
Okay. Motion to approve the rezoning. Do I have a second?
And I assume that would be based upon the language on page 16 of your packet with regards to the amendments promotes the public health, safety, general welfare, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay.
Have a motion from Mr. Poindexter. Ms. Finney seconded it. Do, okay. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of the rezoning, raise your hand. That is approved, 5-0. Okay, now, the second step is the related conditions. So, would anyone, anybody have any questions about the conditions or comments?
No, I think the only thing I had was regarding the comments, and again, you answered that with the buffer so that we tried to, you know, somewhat mask it from this residential section.
On page 31 here in our packet, there's a list of nine conditions that Mr. Linkus agreed to, and that was one of them.
So, at this time, entertain a motion to accept the conditions as presented and agreed to by the petitioner.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Poindexter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Meadwell. All right. So, next, we have three presentations. The first one is interesting. It's an asset disposition. Call on John Eller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the time tonight. We have an asset disposition proposal before you. It is in compliance with the policy that was passed not long ago, and, as you know, our county can dispose of any surplus property by any means that we judge necessary at the highest attainable sale in money or other consideration included, but not limited to the method of sale provided in Article 12, North Carolina General Statute 168. Such sale may be public or private and with or without notice and without a minimum waiting period. And because of tonight, this wasn't coordinated at all. I promise you that, but... Mr. Shof told me 20 years ago that he walked in his office, and his little girl, when he was first elected, used to come in and spin herself around in his office chair. And it's only fitting that Kay's here with us tonight and his family as well. Again, wasn't coordinated at all, so I didn't know you were going to do that to me, so I'm doing it back to you now. But Brent had said, when we were talking about transitioning, he said, "There's only one thing I want, and that's my office chair." And I said, "Why do you want your office chair?" And he said, "'Cause I remember Katie spinning around in that chair." And it really stuck with me because of my situation and, you know, my family and how much I love my kids. And so, Brent, tonight, I am purchasing this chair per county policy for a dollar, giving this to our chief financial officer and assistant county manager, Ms. West, so that when you retire, since I won't be here, you can take your chair with you. Now, you know, you can't, Katie won't be in it to stroll out tonight, but we do thank you for your service and for what you've meant to this county, and I didn't want to wait two months to do that for you. So, Brent, that is your chair now officially. Now, Brent has said to me, "Nobody's going to want this chair when I leave anyways," but he does. So, Brent, we thank you for your service to this county and all that you meant to all of us, and, you know, I think the ability for us to talk through things, as you mentioned, is what democracy should be about and make each other better and sharpen each other's iron. So, thank you for doing that for me. You've been a good friend, a great registered deeds, and a good asset to this county. So, I thank you and I thank your family for sharing you with us for so long. So, let's give Mr. Shof a hand tonight.
I promise you, that reeks of coordination, but it's... I wish somebody had vouched for me. They didn't know this was going to happen, and they didn't know I had intended to do. I don't think either one of us knew that. The only reason I discovered that something was up, I came back from the Y to change, and I went to my office, because you can't change at the Y because of COVID, can't shower there. I noticed my chair was missing, and I said, "Oh, crap." I said, "There's a common denominator here, and her name is Kim Harris." Kim Harris said something about, "I think Mr. Eller might be happy if some of the department heads come to the final meeting," and I took the bait. She also had me cook for a group of veterans on November 11th, I think of about, I went on six years ago. When I got to the event to cater for the veterans, Kim had tricked me into cooking for my own birthday party. So, the lesson over this is going to be, if you need to pull something on somebody, there she is. She can sell sand to people in the desert, or she can trick somebody like me that's pretty paranoid in general to do something. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brent.
Get in the chair, Katie.
Yeah. Very good.
Can I take it back?
Yes, sir. You can do whatever you want to with it now. It's all yours.
That's how it is. 1989, so it got you.
All right. That's great.
Mm-hmm.
All right. The next presentation we have is Employee Recognition. Call on Sheriff Hartman.
Well, thank you for letting me take just a minute of y'all's agenda time. I want to recognize two officers tonight with a special award. In 1981, Sheriff's Training and Standards established an advanced certificate award for law enforcement officers to promote excellence in education. As you know, they, that's the group that manages certifications for all sheriffs in the state. They can pull your certification, and you can't be a law enforcement officer. And one of your former board members had the honor of serving a term on our standards commission, so... But you apply for that. I have to approve your application, and you send it in, and they vet you. It's a combination of service and points. Points are based on law enforcement training and education. So, for example, if you have 12 years of service, you need 69 points to go with that. It takes 25, 20 hours of advanced law enforcement training to get one point, or one semester from an accredited university, one semester hour equals one point. So, as you can see, that's a lot of time and effort, and then they have a staff of 15 full-time people that do all the stuff for sheriffs across the state, and they vet these things. They will send them back if the training doesn't qualify. So, I have 13 officers that have it. We've made it a goal at the sheriff's office to increase the number of people that get it. Really and truly, not very many officers across the state ever attain it. So, this will be my 14th and 15th officer tonight with a unique situation. Just like everybody else in the state, the coronavirus hit the sheriff's standards, and they quit meeting, and so these two gentlemen have been waiting over a year, thinking they're not going to get their certification. So, I'd like to call Steve Moxley and Terry Myers up. As y'all know, Steve retired earlier this year, but he stayed with us part-time. He applied way before he ever retired, so that tells you how long it's taken to get everything back from the state. But I'd like to present them both with their advanced certificate this evening. Thank them for their service here and their professionalism and excellence in law enforcement. As you can see, the state issues a certificate, and it's signed by every commission member once they vote and approve it. Mr. Moxley?
Thank you very much, sir. Have one more thing that goes with it, that's your uniform pin. I'd like to give you. Thank you, sir.
You got it before you retired. Thank you very much for your service and for your efforts, sir. Thank you.
I want to thank them for their service. That's a very deserving honor, and we appreciate that, so, all you do for Davie County.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, before we move on, you'll need to take action on the chair disposition. I forgot to do that earlier, so...
All right, yeah, we'll make sure we got a repeat for that, too. All right, so I guess we will entertain a motion to surplus the chair and sell it for $1, so, to John Eller.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor of that disposition, raise your hand. That is approved, 5-0. Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem.
We wouldn't want the chair repossessed. That would be problematic. All right. So, next, we move to the Republic Services Contract Agreement, and, John, I think you're going to start that presentation.
I will, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to get this pulled up here for you. So, as you know, we've been talking to our partners at Republic Services for a while now, trying to get the best options for sustainable recycling program in Davie County. We have done this in conjunction with our town partners as well, and I appreciate the support from our town partners throughout this discussion because we do want a solution that serves all of Davie County. And so, we appreciate Republic Services working with us. Johnny Lambert has been right there along with me for every step throughout this conversation. I know we've convened the mayors of the towns as well as our chairman to also be part of those discussions, to understand what's occurring, and then we've tried to give you updates along the way and have shared you a lot of information in your packet today. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lambert, who will then introduce our guest from Republic Services, and we'll go through quickly our recycling program and see if you have any questions as to where we are. Mr. Lambert?
I won't take up a lot of time. I'll just introduce Tony Krasenko and Tracy Nester from Republic Services. And mirror what John said, we've been in talks with this probably over a year, so there's been a lot of information come out, and I think it's in your packet, DEQ. Everyone's struggling with this, and I think we can come up with a must-try way for the county to resolve the problem.
Tracy, just use the mouse and scroll.
Okay. First off, good evening, Chairman Renninger, Commissioners, Manager Eller, Robin, and Johnny. I want to thank you guys for all of the collaboration that we have been working on, really for almost a year and a half. So, my name is Tracy Nester, and I'm the Senior Area Manager for Republic Services. And I'm here tonight with Tony Krasenko. Tony and I actually have ties to Davie County. I have been very involved with this contract for about eight years, and I also have family in Advance and Bermuda Run. Tony actually lives in Davie County as well, and he's one of about 30 employees that we have here in Davie County that work every day to provide the essential services to this community. And we are proud to be an industry leader in recycling and waste, and our vision is to continue to be Davie County's partner. Tonight, I will share with you our recycling journey. How did we get here? Followed by, why is it necessary for us to make a change? And what is our plan for a transparent, sustainable program moving forward? To start off, I'd like to talk about an editorial that was written two weeks ago. Mike Barnhart's editorial, September the 17th, did a pretty good job summing up the situation while adding a little bit of color to the program's beginnings. And I quote, "Davy County has a long, has long been on the forefront of recycling. Neighboring counties were jealous. Let's hope the county comes up with a plan that will keep the jealousy in place for many years to come." And I do believe that we have arrived at that. So, we'll start, Tony and I will start the presentation. I will operate while you want to get over here and speak a little bit. And feel free to stop us if you have any questions regarding the presentation.
Good evening to the commission members. I'll go through this relatively quickly. John Eller and Johnny Lambert did a really good synopsis for you in the packet, but for the audience and residents that may be viewing in, this will help put some reasoning behind it of why the program is changing. You know, we've been long-term partners, Republic Services and Davie County, for a long time, and, you know, we have a commitment to fix and continue recycling options for residents. Was a task undertaken by the county, the towns, and the commissioners. The current program and the business model is not sustainable, necessitating a change in mid-contract, and we appreciate everybody's diligence on this because it's not easy, but I think we've come to a very good program that'll move forward. The new program will combine curbside trash and recycling into one service option for unincorporated areas and towns, ensuring a sustainable model. Currently, Davie County is only one of three counties in North Carolina using a countywide curbside program funded by the county. So, we're unique in that sense, and there were more. They've gone away from that, and for obvious reasons, and I think part of this program shows why. Currently, all Davie County residents will still have access to the county convenience site with recycling options. So, residents utilizing the convenience center for trash will have access to recycling. So, that expands those opportunities. Towns get the benefits of scale by acting together. We've had great input and collaboration with the towns and town managers. The impetus is to provide a better recycle model that shares... The impetus is to provide a better recycle model that shares risk and rewards of commodity values and controlling contamination, providing a long-term financially sustainable program. In this model, customers retain 85% of the commodity value. So why is recycling unsustainable? The old recycle model was built on commodity value of approximately $200 a ton. That subsidized the collection and processing of recyclables. That's how recycling programs were artificially very low, and honestly, when they first started, sometimes were even free, because of the value of that commodity. But today, that commodity value is only $50 to $70 per ton, and that fluctuates. The value of the commodity subsidizes that collection and processing, and additionally, contamination is increased due to carelessness and a lot of wishful recycling. People are adamant about recycling, and they want to recycle everything they possibly can, and because of that, you know, desire to do that, we've lost some of the messaging of what's recyclable and what isn't at a curbside program. So education is a big key to this. Good news is, we can fix it and have a sustainable, durable model that's fair. This is the model that shows, you know, the basic, the controllables, the collection and the processing. We can control those costs, and as stated in this new model, those stay relative, the same, outside of a consumer price index increase. Residual is something that we need collaboration with. Customers need to help control that, and we need to help control that with the messaging as well. So that's less controllable, but manageable. The uncontrollable in the model, obviously, is the commodity sale. So this model gives you a price for collection processing, plus the disposal of the residual, take away the commodity value, and that gives you your price for recycling. How is that model transparent? Commodity values are supplied for a 12-month period based on public market index. We'll supply that every year to the county and to the towns, and the customers will retain 85% of that commodity value. The variables in the model, we talked a little bit under the new model, customers receive more credit, lowering prices. Additionally, only a collection rate, processing rate, and residual charge are adjusted annually by consumer price index. And this is basically the synopsis you'll see each year. It'll give that entire month of what those commodity prices are, and you can see, they fluctuate month to month. Some fluctuate more than others, but it gives you a true indicator of what the values are. You can see, as of recent, plastics were a little lower. It runs with oil. Oil prices go down, cost of plastics go down. Oil prices go up, they go up. They go hand in hand. So the proposal analysis, current subscription rate is $19.70 per month for trash only. The new rate would be $22.68, and that's broken down for a trash cost of $18.18, recycle collection of $3.45, and the recycle processing of $1.05 per customer. And of course, that $1.05 will go up or down based on commodity value. And how do we compare? It's not always a clear barometer, but everybody likes to know how they compare with our neighbors and surrounding areas. In Guilford County, there is a franchise license. It's not exclusive, but it's a franchise license. There's probably about 25,000 customers in Guilford. Their total rate is bundled at $21.50. Alamance County, they split it between trash and recycle. Their total's $26.85. Alexander County, $27.58. It's a bundled price. Catawba County, again, a bundled price of $20.48. Orange County is one of those, one of three counties like Davie, that continues to fund it countywide. Their collection rate is $3.82, but then they pay processing separately. So they're probably, their total price is somewhere around $5, if I were to estimate for their, and that's passed on through a solid waste fee to each individual resident of the county. Some of the frequently asked questions, can recycling be individual subscription? To kind of be direct about it, it really can't. It's a self-defeating model. The one county where we do have that situation is Alamance County. Their participation is above 15%, and it's reflected in their price. Their recycle is $11 per month. So it's the law of economics, as you lose customers, that price goes up, because you're running the same routes. The difference is whether you're going to pick up 15 customers or five customers. So that's why the individual subscription, it's a self-defeating proposition, it's a race to the bottom. And really, we're in conversations with Alamance County now about changing that program back to a bundled service, to get that participation back up. Can the county do it themselves? Absolutely. There's plenty out there that do it. The costs and the capital do make it difficult. Just one collection truck is $355,000, plus you're paying full market price for the processing of the recyclables. Why should the county consider doing this together? Strength in numbers. I think we've done a good job of collaborating with the county. The county brought in all the towns to make sure that we could continue to have that scale, and be able to provide it at the most affordable cost for all the entities in the county. I think we've been pretty successful at that. And the education materials for residents. Republic Service made a significant investment in the education part. We have a website, recyclingsimplified.com. It's a phenomenal website. I usually don't brag about, you know, websites like this, but it's really well-done. We have a complete education curriculum, K through 12, on the site. We have virtual tours. It's something I use when I participate with the Davie County Field Days for the Solid Soil and Waste Conservation District. Unfortunately, we won't be doing it this year, but it's actually an annual event I do really look forward to. It's a good time. So to just sum up the changes to the program, curbside program becomes one service, trash and recycle together. Subscription pricing will increase from $19.70 to $22.68, removes the $2 franchise fee from the franchise rate that funded a portion of the countywide recycle program. Countywide recycle program and funding ends, so the $400,000 expenditure goes away. Recycling's expanded at the convenience site, we're adding a recycling compactor, the hauling and the processing. So those that are not doing curbside trash and taking it to the convenience center, they're going to have that same access to recycling. So if they're taking their trash there, they're going to just take their recyclables with them as well. The tonnage discount is removed, it's no longer applicable. It was something that was back in the, I believe, the 2006 agreement, and just kind of was stuck in there. And update the convenience center fee, which just resets those cost allocations, to make sure each individual component of that contract stands on its own, as far as price, that the residential collection doesn't subsidize the collection center, and vice versa. And some of those things that, you know, are a cost of increase as well. In 2016, we did about $175,000 improvement on the walls at the convenience center, and last year, an $8,000 investment in renovating the scale house. So it's a good collaboration, and we'd welcome to answer any questions that the commissioners would have.
Chairman, the $22.68 figure, what's the, what's your, is that an annual fee? Is that the fee that will be for a year, and then you'll readjust?
Yes, that fee is locked, that rate is locked in for a year. We'll send in the consumer price index information, and it'll go up by that consumer price index, and then we'll supply the commodity values of what the processing rate would be. So if those values go up, the rate goes down. If values go down, it may go up a few cents. We've been doing this with most of the western communities now for at least two years, and I haven't had anybody's go up more than four cents, and that was even with commodity values dropping. So it doesn't move a whole lot, so it's fairly steady. There's no shockers there.
The thing that concerns me, just that has concerned me a little bit, is the issue of the rules changing in midstream, okay? Not only your contract changing, but part of the issue, part of the issue is, what people recycle, and what you guys want in recycling, changes from day to day and week to week. One minute, no, listen, one minute cardboard's acceptable, it's profitable, one minute it's not. One minute plastics is acceptable, one minute it's not. One minute glass is acceptable, one minute it's not. And minutes, my term, not your term. But, so I guess the thing that would concern me a little bit is, are there any restrictions coming in terms of, you know, when you say you're going to educate people, are you going to restrict what they can put in recycling versus what they can put in trash? Are there any penalties if what they deem as recyclable, based on what rules were a year ago, is not recyclable now in terms of profitability for the company? How's that going to work?
We've actually been very fortunate here. The Murph Shed that we're in falls into our Conover recycling facility. We haven't approached our customers about removing glass, or things that are no longer valuable. We've continued to offer that, and although we educate our communities that we serve, that they can lower their cost by, say, removing glass, but we understand, you know, there's a conflict, because glass is very recyclable, but it has a negative value. That's kind of the impetus of this. Our thing is to educate what shouldn't go in there. What we see in every day in the recycle stream, the things that are obvious that don't belong there. You would not believe the amount of dirty diapers, you know, disposable diapers we get, bowling balls, ceiling fans, kind of the things you go.
Christmas lights.
Christmas lights, you know, those are some of the big things.
Hoses.
Hoses, tanglers that get caught in there, and that causes a lot of damage, actually, on our end. But I mean, we've had, you know, people put in plate steel, and it gets on a conveyor belt, and splits that conveyor belt right in half, and that's about $6,800 for a piece of steel that, you know, you can recycle steel, just not at the curb. You can put it in your steel cans, you can put it in your beverage cans, but, you know, plate steel needs to go to the scrapyard. So it's really about what's recyclable at a curbside. Plastics, 1 through 7, are still recyclable, but 99% of the plastic that's out there are number ones, number twos, and probably 2% are number fives. The rest you really don't see anymore, just because manufacturing's changed. They've simplified their processes as well, and aluminum cans, metal cans have always been acceptable.
So there's not going to be any kind of penalization to the folks? You just kind of assimilate it into the process, and, okay, all right.
We feel that we want to reset recycling and emphasize, I can commit to you that what our approved list is not going to change for the remainder of this contract. It's still going to be bottles, paper, and plastics. The problem is that we've got to get out those things that are not recyclable, like film, plastic bags, hoses, Christmas lights. Those are the things that are really bringing down the value of the other commodities, and diapers. You know, things like that, that need to come out, and we need to focus on the four things that are recyclable, which is your cardboard, your paper, your plastic, your jars, and your cans. Anything else?
I just want to say, you know, this has been a long time, and Johnny Lambert's did a great job. Seems like it's been going on for two years, but I know it's not been that long. But anyway, I know, I appreciate Republic staying with us and working through this, so, and I think it's a fair proposal, so.
Thank you. In summary, you know, I feel that we are aligned with the staff's recommendation, and it is the best foot forward to maintain a sustainable curbside program. We respectfully ask that you consider and approve the amended contracts with Republic. We only have one planet to call home, and we're very passionate about protecting it. Thank you for letting us be here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we need to take, I guess, action on the franchise agreement and the Second Amendment to the lease.
And, yes, both, all the attachments that are on your agenda today, tonight.
Okay. So, do we need to do that with two motions, Mr. Vogler, probably would be best?
Probably cleaner to do it with two separate motions.
Okay, so, the first one is the Second Amendment to the franchise agreement, which is effective 1/1, I'm sorry, June 1st of 2021. So I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve as.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the Second Amendment to the franchise agreement, effective July 1, 2021, raise your hand. That is approved, 5-0. Okay, so the second item before us is the Second Amendment to the operating lease, which is a two-year extension through June 30th of 2023. So the mechanisms for the price increases is the same, but this agreement is through June 30th of 2023. So someone like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we move to the consent agenda. Trust everyone's had a chance to look at this, and does anyone have any questions or anything they would like to draw attention to on the consent agenda?
That would have been a public comment, a point of privilege, I'm going to allow you to speak.
I'm Kevin Hobson. Most of you know me, resident of Davie County, pastor here in Davie County. And I'd just like to thank the commission board for hearing the resolution for life. I appreciate that. I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. I'd also like to take just a moment and recognize Pastor Billy Seats, he passed away back in August. He'd like to have been here tonight, he was real passionate, he is. His wife, Ms. Teresa, is here tonight, I appreciate her being here, and I appreciate the county wanting to consider this resolution for not only the right to life for the unborn, but for the, those that are born as well. I think it's very important, and we understand that we're created in the image of God, and every time you do the right thing, God will bless the right thing. And I just appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the consideration. I hope Davie County will be a county that others can look at and will model after. And I appreciate you being at the forefront of this, and I just want to say thank you very much, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to stand, and I appreciate all that Brother Billy did, and to give God the glory for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to say thank you to the organization. It put together this very strong resolution. My wife and I, 10 years ago, founded Davie Crisis Pregnancy Center Ministry, which has been on the forefront of the pro-life movement for a long time, and so this is a long time coming. We thank you all for bringing it. Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your efforts to bring this forward, and I agree with you, pastor. As the days move forward, we have to understand that all life is valuable, and I think this resolution speaks to that, and so appreciate you. Thank you, thank you guys, and thank you all for bringing it forward.
And I would be up or miss if I didn't recognize the Pavlansky family, Dan Pavlansky and Keith, they were very instrumental in getting this going, and I think, Dan, it's been a while, but I think that's your wife with you, maybe?
The good-looking one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't talking about you, yeah, okay, all right, okay. But anyway, all right. So, any other comments? Okay, with that, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you. All right. All right, so, we move to old business. We have, as we will recall, at last month's meeting, we had a long meeting about a solar farm, and we had asked the staff to go back and revisit some issues pertaining to that. And they have done that, and they're going to provide us with an update. So, John, I think you're going to kick that off.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I just asked Mr. Meewell to come back in. I know he's been here once tonight, was here last month, and we'll bring him back again one more time. We have prepared some information for you. I know I've talked to you about that and have shared that with you, because I know you had some questions at the last meeting about what things we may want to think about as it relates to our comprehensive plan, but also the solar farm questions that you had from last month, and how to deal with any future requests that may come in, and a few questions that you had about why those areas were not identified in the comprehensive plan. And so, perhaps Mr. Meewell can talk about that, there's a reason for that. And so, he'll address your questions tonight, just take it easy on him, because he's working with us here to try to get you the answers to your questions. But we hope we gave you some good history in the document that you had. It's important, I think, to know where you're going, to first know where you've been. And so, what we try to do in this memorandum to you is to share with you kind of where we started and where we are now. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Meewell, thanking for his work on this, and hopefully try to get your answers resolved. And if not, you know, we'll keep chipping away at this thing. But hopefully, tonight, you'll see that we've been able to kind of give you some historical context, but also, you know, some thoughts going forward. Mr. Meewell?
Thank you, John. Board, and I guess to kind of, just kind of give you context to where we were, to where we are now, you know, prior to 2013, the county viewed solar facilities just as a permitted use that would be allowed within our residential agricultural and all of our industrial zoning districts. You know, we had a couple of projects then that were approved or allowed to proceed through prior to 2013. But in 2013, staff came to the board trying to follow a model solar generating facility ordinance that was being, or that was created by the state, by the industry. We brought that to the board, made some changes to reflect how we seen these type uses and how they would fit within our community. Again, you know, they were permitted with conditions in 2013 in the RA and industrial zoning district. But it also allowed these facilities to be in the R-20 and R-12 with the issuance of a special use permit. So in 2017, we changed the ordinance again. And some of you were on the board then, if you recall. We went, we had like six meetings to discuss these changes. And we went a full circle on what were some of the possible alternatives to address this one particular type use. And at the time, the board's thinking was that you wanted control. You wanted these facilities to come to you as a group to make a vote, either up or down, to review these. So this is how the special purpose district was created. So this was a brand-new district, and so moving forward, that's kind of where we were until 2019. Now, we had like four applications approved under that, under that process, and we had one withdrawn because they could not make their interconnection processes with their power provider. But in 2019, again, to address, you know, the concerns that the board was hearing from citizens when these type requests came, you know, we had to look at buffering again. And we, staff, put together a list of possible or potential changes that we seen could help, I don't want to say alleviate some of the issues that we were seeing with solar facilities, but help alleviate some of the issues that you were seeing as citizens would come to you and speak in favor or against that. You know, some of those were that we would require all SP zonings to be a special conditions request, like tonight, you had a special conditions where the board added additional conditions to that. That, one was that we would require all special purpose zoning, rezonings for solar facilities also go to the Board of Adjustment for a special use permit. At the time, the board really didn't want that either, because another board was going to be the final say-so, in whether or not a use was going to be allowed or not. The board did not want to create this special purpose district and then potentially have the Board of Adjustment turn down or, you know, deny a special use permit for this facility. You didn't want to have this amount of SP zoning out there. But the, one was to also modify some of the conditions for the district itself, you know, one, expanding setbacks, expanding buffering. So, from that, the board decided just to change some of the setback requirements and buffering requirements, as well as making a distinction to where those setbacks were measured to, not just, you know, it was to the equipment itself. So, so as a result, you know, we've come a long way, made significant changes to this and how it was reviewed and approved by staff, basically pre-2013, to, you know, having these type legislative decisions before you each and every time. So, you know, at our last meeting, this, the question of the comprehensive plan kept coming up. And, you know, the, as the board knows, this was adopted in 2019. We had a year and a half process to develop this. It's got a horizon year of 2040. But, you know, this updated the 2005 plan. I think it's, it's good to note that a comprehensive plan is not a use-by-use designation. It's a set of policies, it's a set of guidelines that you, I, as, you know, staff, citizens can look upon to see where we're going to 2040. As you see on the maps for our future land use map, our growth maps, you know, there's no parcel lines there, right? It's not a parcel-by-parcel designation. That's the reason why you have a zoning ordinance. A zoning ordinance is a parcel-by-parcel designation. It is, outlines what uses are allowed. When we look at the table uses and we see each district, and we go down there, we know exactly where those uses are. So that's the reason why a comprehensive plan cannot be that type document. It's broader picture, it's larger. You know, it's, it's difficult sometimes, but, you know, if you do a careful reading of the comprehensive plan, you know, you're going to find where you have perceived inconsistencies. You're going to see statements to where it says, you know, residential areas, you know, are, need to be protected, but on future management. You may have an industrial area designation in close proximity. That's not an indication that the plan's wrong or that it's bad. It's really a reflection of zoning cases are hard, and they're hard decisions to make sometimes. And they have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. There are other factors that come into zoning decisions, not just what a color on a map is sometimes, or, you know, a color of what a land use designation is. So, I sense your frustrations. I'm frustrated sometimes, you know, as to why, you know, we continue to have these conflicts, or, I don't know if it's misunderstandings or, you know, of how the processes work, but, you know, I wish, if there were a magic solution to it, we wouldn't have any problems, you guys wouldn't have anyone coming before you each month, right? So, you know, the, one of the issues that was brought up too was, you know, the plan is scheduled to be updated. The implementation plan, there's a chart that kind of outlines who is responsible for what. Now, that implementation plan is looked at annually, but the overall review and evaluation of key recommendations, that's going to be looked at every five years. You know, so, I know when we look at the plan and the inconsistencies, you know, we have to look at that, you know, this plan has only been in effect since December of 2019. We've only had a handful of test cases, right? So we really don't know how it's working. I mean, I think to have, to take the approach that we need to make wholesale changes may be premature at this time. Can it be tweaked? Sure. But to go in and make large, you know, expansive changes to the document when, you know, it's only been in effect for really five months, six months, because you just haven't had meetings, you haven't had requests, may be premature. So, you also heard last month of a moratorium. Mr. Renner brought up the issue in Rowan County. That was included in a memo to you, the language of that. There's a process for that. But I think that the board really needs to understand the intent of what a moratorium is and the purpose that it's used for. You know, it's to kind of maintain your status quo, to allow you to get your house in order, to address some type of need. I don't know that we're quite there yet. Maybe, you know, after your thinking on this, but, you know, there's two processes. One's, you know, a moratorium for less than 60 days. You know, that doesn't require as much notification, you can do it as a legislative. If it's going to be more than 60 days, then we have to treat it just like a rezoning property, we have to notify or advertise for two weeks and have a public hearing and things of that nature. But, you know, there are certain things that you have to include as part of that moratorium, you know, a statement of the problems, the conditions, and, you know, why an alternative action is required. So, you know, we really need to think about, if we go that route, what we're wanting to try to address with this. So, the next, I guess the next real big question, I mean, I think even from a staff perspective, is, you know, the siding of solar farms. Where do these type uses belong? You know, I think the trends that you're going to see is that you're going to see applications for larger tract sizes. You're not going to see the, our typical, our 30, 40, 50-acre type size facilities, you're going to see larger. I think that as the demand or the competition that these facility providers have to compete with each other with the power companies, the power companies want larger, so they don't want to really deal with a smaller group of applicants. They want larger, bigger type facilities to quickly take up or accommodate that alternative energy that they're required to have to provide. So, you know, as we look in the county, these have, mainly all facilities, have been in our residential agricultural zoning districts, and there's a reason why. You know, not every piece of property in Davie County is going to be perfect for a solar facility. It has to be, has to meet certain criteria for this type use. So, you know, the reason the RA district is, it's G Plan, a willing individual that's wanting to lease that property, you know, it's typically under some type of agricultural use or present use value. So these are the type of cities, we're not seeing these actually being located in our industrial areas. And there's a reason for that, too. You know, if you look at the total acres that we have in the county, you know, probably a little bit over 151,000 acres, you know, we're still 98% residential, you know? So, yeah, if we look at placing these type facilities just in industrial-type areas, I don't know that that's going to work either, right? You know, because then you're going to have requests to zone industrial, then to special purpose districts. So you're always going to have this conflict. And not that it's a bad thing, I mean, I think it's pretty wonderful that we can still boast that we've got 98% of our landmass in the county is still residential, and biggest part of that is residential agricultural. You know, what more of a, you know, of farmland preservation than the state that, you know, we've got over close to 80% of our landmass in, you know, zone residential agricultural? I mean, that's something to be, you know, to be proud of, actually. So, so, you know, you know, how do we, you know, anyone can apply for a rezoning, we can't stop, we can encourage, you know? We have these conversations regularly. Hey, you know what? You know, this may not happen, you know, but it's your right to petition the board. I'm pretty sure that it's going to not do well, you know, just location, you know, location, 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 so. But, you know, so, you know, we've had 399 acres of property zoned to special purpose. As I said, you know, most of these are in our residential agricultural areas, you know? So, possible options, future options, you know, you know, where do we want these, right? I think that's probably the biggest question that the board really needs to decide, is where and how they are located. You know, from, you know, the comments that, you know, we as staff hear as individuals come before you, you know, it's usually the visual, you know, they don't want to see this type of facility from their property. I don't know what is that setback? Is it 500 feet? Is it 1,000 feet? Depending on the terrain of the property, 2,000 feet's not going to be enough. So I don't know that setbacks alone is an option. Obviously landscaping or buffering, that only screens so much. I mean, so at some point in time, we're going to be impacted, some residential use, right? You know, we looked at, you know, Yakon County, you know, Davidson County, Iredale, you see what Rowan's doing, you know, we, we're all kind of still following the same kind of processes. Yakon is more of Board of Adjustment, Iredale is, you know, rezoning legislative decisions just like you, Davidson's the same way. So I don't know that we're so far off base with our neighbors and how they're doing. We're not in this alone, they are receiving the same amount of requests that we are. But it's just that varying degree of what we want to include in that. So, you know, from a staff perspective, I just don't know what, from a setback and from a landscaping, I don't know how you accommodate these concerns that you hear before you each and every time a request comes, because there's just no way to put it far enough off the road or high enough screening to meet that type comments that you receive. So, with that, you know, you know, we definitely could make additional modifications to this, but again, I just don't know what they would be. And that's just being honest, I just don't know. You know, I will say that with each existing facility that we've had, we've never received a single complaint about. facility that we've had, we've never received a single complaint about any of our existing facilities, not one, not anything about sound, glare, noise. So outside of, you know, the construction part of it, um we have not received a single complaint for any of these existing facilities today.
Andrew, I have a question for you, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Uh you said we have two hundred and ninety-nine acres under the special.
Three hundred, three hundred and ninety-nine.
Three hundred and ninety-nine. Um does this include those solar farms that were put in before the special?
Yeah, uh altogether, you have six hundred and fourteen acres and fifty still pending. So i- if uh uh parent them, um the the request you had at your last uh last meeting. So uh so if you were to prove that, there'd be six hundred and sixty. And that, and I will say this one thing, we had a um, there were thirty-three acres, um I'm sorry, um two hundred and fifty-nine acres um project that was split approved. Uh part was in town of Monksville, the other portion was um in the county's jurisdiction. So um but total acreage uh countywide, we're right now at six hundred and fourteen acres.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time to reduce the history to writing. Now, this is helpful. Um I guess where we are with the last month's meeting was, you know, we decided we were going to continue to discuss it, and that's where we are. We are under no compulsion to do anything until we decide that we're ready to bring it back up. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is at the board's pleasure.
Yeah.
Well, and and I can tell you, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I I mean, I've had, I've had, I've had multiple calls since that meeting about two projects going, and one of them is from the people that are doing the project. You're talking about a a four or five hundred acre solar farm. So you know, at some point, we do have to come up, and and I love the ninety-eight percent in residential, but you know, it's kind of like it always, it's always relative.
Right.
Uh it's great, it's 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 uh it's quiet, but it's not in my backyard. So if 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 the six hundred acres that are out there are in your backyard, you might have an issue with it. So um um and I can tell you, the I don't guess these projects have even come before you yet, but one, one that they're telling me is close to five hundred acres, and the other one is dead set slap in the middle of of um a group of homes uh out off of Ratliff Road. And so, I mean, Mr. Chairman, we do have to have some, some uh we do have to come to some realization of where do we want these? In isolated areas? With um um not, not in people's backyards? And so that, that's my, that's my only, that's my only thought here. You know, we we uh uh that's not even talking about the Pudding Ridge Road issue. These are other issues, and they're coming before us, and they're going to continue to come before us unless we make some sort of decision about, as you said, Andrew, where we want these.
And and that's, and that, and that's a good comment, Mark. I mean, I agree with you. Like, like you said, though, you you're not going to say, I want one here, I want one here. I I mean, it's gonna, it's it's tough. It it's gonna be tough, right?
And and I think, too, Mr. Buckley, uh and Mr. Jones, you know, uh there has to be, you you heard me say transmission lines. So the power companies have a a part to play in this, too, you know, just not every piece of property is going to be able to be served um to have the adequate infrastructure to do so. Now, you've seen some, um like the facility there on Baltimore Road where they're having to install um the power lines to get to the transformer, uh you know, at like Ashley Furniture, for instance. So they're having to to take care of that. So um um it it's complicated, um to say the least, but but you're right. It's just not every piece of property is conducive to a solar facility. Um but it it just seems, a- as you both mentioned, where these housing neighborhoods are, that's where the power grid is going, right?
And you know, if we could, if we could go to the folks of Davie County and say, well, thi- this is helping reduce your cost.
Right.
But but at no point does anybody tell us that. It's no, it's going in, it's going in the grid somewhere, and so that doesn't help the process.
Right.
Mr. Meadwell, how does, how do the solar farms affect our tax base? I I mean, what kind of taxes do we ballpark gain on them?
I mean, that may be more of a question for Mr. Myers. I know, um.
There he is.
Mr. Myers.
Come on down.
He's here for a reason, so.
I don't mean to put you on the spot like that, but you know, if you, if you need to get back to us, you can, but if you have a general idea.
So how does it affect the tax base?
What kind of tax do we collect on that area?
When it comes to valuing the solar panels and equipment itself, it is statutorily valued. So the statute tells us, legislation tells us how to value, and that's eighty percent of it is is non-taxable. So we're actually getting twenty percent on on the on the original price of the the cost of the solar panels themselves and the equipment. And as far as the land itself, now, there are some solar companies that allow present use value to continue, okay? In the county so far, that has not been the case. It is very limited of what they can keep on the grounds to be around the panels, that it won't damage the panels. So all the solar farms that have went in Davie County, they're no longer in present use. So they're being valued at market value currently.
That means not in farm value.
Correct. That is correct. So that there is a rollout bill because for the, for the land that sits underneath the panels. Now, in some cases in the county, the farms were large enough where they were not going to encompass the whole farm. So the land that's not underneath the panels can continue in present use, but all the the planned, because they submit a site plan, and we review that site plan, and the the area that's in that site plan, there is, there is a rollback bill according to statute because it no longer qualifies for present use.
The twenty percent, that that's twenty percent asset on the ground.
Correct.
For twenty or twenty-five years, that is no depreciation to zero, that's.
No, it depreciates. It does depreciate, just like all business, personal property, it does depreciate.
Okay.
I can't hold it, I can't hold it at at cash value for for the, because they do depreciate.
And some of the ones you've already seen come, I I mean, obviously, you're, some of these are starting to trickle in, you know, some of the, some of the older ones, you're starting to see what, I guess, you're starting to see the equation.
They do not, the the value does not go to zero.
What happens? Yeah.
The value on them does not go to zero. Drops down. You know, it's got a depreciated life on it, and it drops down to that percentage, and then it's taxed at that percentage for the remaining life of the panels.
That's ten percent.
Huh?
That's ten percent of the, the taxable value will never be below ten percent?
I'm thinking on that is twelve. But but that is provided to us from the Department of Revenue.
On the farms that have.
But I'll give you that on Terry.
Excuse me.
Okay.
On the farms that have part of the the use in solar farm and then some that's left over that could be left in present use, it still has to meet the minimum requirements of present.
All the statutes do do apply to the remaining portion of that property. They've got to meet the minimum requirements, they've got to meet the income requirements, and they're audited, just like all of our other present use property is audited, according to statute.
Mm-hmm.
But like I said, you know, there are some provisions out there that, you know, just because solar panels go out there, I'm not sitting here telling you that automatically that's an unqualifying event, because there are some solar farms across the state that were able to maintain their present use value. But they're meeting the statutory provisions to do so.
And who determines that?
They've got to meet the statutory provisions found in North Carolina General Statute, that there's got to be farming activity going on around those panels that meet the provisions set forth in statute.
Thank you.
Chairman, could I, could I, just a couple of things to point out for for these two gentlemen. Um first of all, I think what Mr. Myers is saying is, um, you know, versus the present use scenario, there there would be some value, but it would depreciate over time. I think for Mr. Meadwell, the thing that we would need your thoughts about tonight, and and I think he said it best, and because because I think there, there may be some people who don't realize this, because I know you don't see it when applications come in. I mean, we're not out promoting this or not promoting this. I mean, we we respond to the applications as they come in. He has a hard job in that regard, he and his staff, because, you know, when they come in, we have to deal with them, and then they come to you, obviously, for us to think about. I think as a- as he and us collectively are all uh thinking about this for the future in particular, is really trying to figure out to what I think Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Blakely uh were asking earlier about, you know, what is the expectation? Because uh if if we do nothing, then, as he said, the the way our comprehensive plan stands today, as these applications come in, we have to make a case-by-case decision. If you go back to the history in your document to twenty seventeen, uh I think Mr. Meadwell said this, there's a reason for that, uh because we needed to look at these on a case-by-case basis. Uh and so the case-by-case basis, as hard as it is when it occurs, is really in there because of historical reasons. Now, if we wanted to change that, you know, I think he said that's perfectly fine. We just need to decide, is this more of industrial use? Uh and do we want to specify it's, it can't be close to a residential area? But regardless of either one of those options you pick, you're still going to have to have these kind of conversations. And so I think staff are seeking guidance on how do we handle this? I know you're, you're seeking it as well. And then also knowing that the moratorium exists in some other counties, uh wh- what does that mean as we think through that? And then I think on on page five here, what we've also said is, um and Andrew does this, I I know he does, when we have a a special purpose zoning map amendment application come in, as he said to you, he will talk to the applicants about, you know, I think this is going to be a long shot, you know, or, you know, maybe this would be something that the board will talk about. We could strongly encourage that, depending on the types of use uh that this board wants them to think about. So when an applicant comes, perhaps we can be, you know, more forthcoming. Uh that does put staff in an odd position, though, to be able to try to tell an applicant, Mr. Vogler, I'll lean on you on this, for him to try to tell an applicant where he thinks the board will or won't land on something. I think that puts staff in a very odd spot. Uh so we may not resolve this issue tonight, uh but we do want to keep thinking through those things. But I think staff are going to continue to struggle. I think they're trying their best, but we're going to continue to struggle. We're not out asking people to make any kind of application, but when they come in, we have to respond to them. I think the other thing, and I think you mentioned this at your last meeting, that you're going to continue to struggle with, is property rights. And I know all of you know that, you know, and and it's hard, because, you know, you may view that differently based on each application. Uh and and so with that, just some things to think about. But we do need some guidance to know how to help you. Um so, Mr. Vogler?
And that's one of the things I was sitting over here thinking about and thinking that that this board needs to look at the great big picture, not just the this fifty acres here or this two hundred acres there, but the great big picture, and Andrew can can expound upon this, but the great big picture is that in the United States, a property owner has certain inalienable rights to use his property however he sees fit. Now, those rights, and uh if they start infringing upon other property owners, can then be pulled back somewhat. But the overall, the 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 starting point is that if I own a thousand acres, I have the right to use it however I want to. And uh now, that's where zoning comes in. And even zoning, uh in order for you to have a zoning map or have have zoning and and restrict certain areas, you've got to have some basis for your restrictions. You can't say, I I just don't want X Y Z corporation over in this edge of the county, or I don't want solar farms in this edge of the county. You've got to have some sort of basis to re, on why you're restricting that. And that's something that that you've done with your zoning ordinance. Uh but your zoning ordinance has to have a comprehensive plan, and it has to show growth areas, and it has to show just just all grades of things, and all what's best for the public health, safety, and welfare of this area. Is there roads out there that that can accommodate uh this type of industry or not? I mean, there's just all grades of things you have to look at, and I, and that's what our planning and zoning department does in conjunction with the school of government, uh the school of government, and in conjunction with uh the state in looking at the overall case law and looking at the overall statutes and what you can and can't do. And that's where they have tried to develop these, these plans since nineteen seventy-something, when we first adopted zoning here in Davie County. And we were one of the first counties in this area to adopt zoning. And uh but uh.
But and I think.
Yeah, some counties that hadn't, that just now adopting, and and some don't even have zoning still.
I think the other thing that makes it somewhat um difficult is that these uh companies, they don't own the property. They, these are long-term leases. So you have a citizen, a landowner from in in the county that's leasing the property. Um we've only had one facility where the um the solar company actually purchased the property, and that was the track over on Potrick.
Potrick.
Yeah.
Brian, can you get us, um if this is possible, the documentation on the taxes that have been paid on these properties that we have so far, so we can kind of look at the acreage, acreage, what the tax benefit of these properties are? Mr. Vogler, it, can you by, can you by ordinance or policy specifically restrict uh the size of a solar farm? Can we, can we go in by uh in policy and say that we'll not allow solar farms in Davie County over fifty acres or over a hundred acres, or whatever it might be?
I think when you do that, then you're going to have to decide whether or not you want to fight that in in the courts, and whether you think you can win it in the courts. And uh and that's uh is going to be an area that that at this point in time, in the overall um history of solar farms in North Carolina, and this, I'm not sure you can answer that, because there's not been any court cases that that, is that correct, Andrew?
Yeah, um and from part of the research that I've done, these mega-type sites, those have, because there's, there's a clear um um issue there with a with a mega site with like over a thousand acres, right? Um where there's a limit right there, saying, no, we don't allow these mega sites over a thousand acres. I think you'll, to Ed's point, you may have difficulty um limiting to fifty-acre uh pieces. Um if I'm a solar facility, uh I'm just going to break it up in fifty-acre pieces and come back to you each month, um and try to, you know, do the system that way.
Or more importantly, if uh if you've said fifty acres and you've allowed up to fifty acres, and I am a property owner who wants to lease fifty-three acres to a solar farm, I'm liable to take you to court and say, okay, what's your rationale between fifty and fifty-three?
Well, under that theory, then, we're, we're open to suit it, to turn any of them down. So, because how can I turn one down on this side of the county and not turn it down on this side of the county? Guess what I'm going to have? I'm going to have the citizens on this side of the county saying, oh, well, you're going to allow the solar farm in my neighborhood, but you won't allow the solar farm in this neighborhood. So in theory, what you're telling me is, there's nothing we can do.
You've got to have rationales as to why you're doing what you're doing to restrict the use of private property.
But the subjective criteria of it's not in keeping with the character of the area, I mean, is that not there for a reason?
That is part of.
That is, that is your out if you so choose to go down that path.
Yes.
And I think that's, and I know last month, you heard these, uh, when we provide you a staff report, we go through the comprehensive plan, and we lay out some of these that basically say, you know, you know, protect residential areas, add appropriate landscaping. You're going, like I said, you find these inconsistencies, and I think that that's the reason why it's a case-by-case basis. Um and you use your comp plan because you're mandated to do so, um to make those decisions based on that scenario or that situation for that piece of property, and how it fits um with your comp plan and your growth plan, and and how you make your decisions that way.
Because some of the proposed areas could be hidden from sight.
They could.
But last month, that one really could not be hidden from sight because of the elevation of the land that surrounded it. And then the landowner also. And then, the landowner also doesn't reside on that property, but the opposition landowners do.
And that's a good example. I mean, I think the closest residence was 1,700 feet, 1,800 feet away. In most areas of the county, 1,800 feet, you would not be able to see a particular use. In this case, I don't know, if you were 2,500 feet, I still think you would have a sight issue there. So, no setback. I don't know how you would address the setback in that situation.
Put a point on the mega sites, you mentioned 1,000 acres. I mean, that's relative. I mean, we got, we're a pretty small county from an area perspective at 150, whatever, 152,000. So, you know, if we were a million, 152,000, I mean, you know, that would help define what the mega site be, you know, this one that we're talking about that's 500-plus, you know, I think under any definition is a mega site.
Right, right. Relatively, speaking for Davie County, right.
Mr. Jones, is that just for the equipment associated with the farm?
I think we would like to see the total tax benefit from, don't you, is that what you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, total tax benefit, less any expenses or less any liabilities to the county.
Just so we have an idea of what kind of benefit it's providing.
You know, the only statement I'm going to say to the board here, and again, we're all doing what we think is best for the community and us, but, you know, again, the precedent for the landowner, for me, is a substantial issue. But I think this is a case-by-case piece. And again, you know, it's a visual determinant of the community and how we think it's going to, you know, alter the community. You know, we say that, you know, the one last month was a visual barrier, however, the one before that was on the corner of Baltimore and Beecham Road, right out in the wide open, and we let it go. You know, so what's going to happen is those people are going to say, wait a minute, Mark said, you put this in my backyard, right on the corner of two roads, you know what I'm saying, but you didn't allow that one. And that's going, it's going to get us in a pickle.
Well, and I think that's why it's incumbent on us to try to figure out where we're going. Because I hear you on the case-by-case basis, and that's valid, but without some bumpers in the gutter here, we're going to, I think we're going to get some pushback, you know, if we just do make decisions on a case-by-case basis. Maybe that's the best we can do, I don't know. But I think we, I appreciate what you've done, and I would like to continue to talk about it, and let's talk about it amongst ourselves and continue to move this forward. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank, before we leave, thank Andrew for doing this. All of you know what y'all went through in 2017, when you talked about all this, and we set up that special purpose and zoning amendment. And that's not always the easiest process for staff to go through because of things we're talking about today. So, I think as you deliberate offline and talk amongst yourselves and individually weigh in, and you just know that, I'm trying to think the way to say this, Andrew's not the good or the bad guy, he's just the guy that receives the application. I think all of you know that, I just want to say it, because I think sometimes, you know, they get the brunt of things, not just from us asking questions, but citizens too. But I do appreciate the work that he and his staff are doing, and I know he wants to seek resolution for this as much as you do. So, thank you.
All right. Next, we have the contract for the utility design and construction of the town of Moxley.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lambert's going to give us an update. Between your Northeast Davie Sewer Project and what you talked about with the town last month, we're at this critical juncture in our county's history, I think, to really set the stage for water and sewer infrastructure for years to come. Mr. Lambert, his leadership is very noticeable. So, tonight's before you to make that big decision. So, Johnny, thanks for all you do.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I'm here tonight to introduce you to the contract with Hazen and Sawyer. As you're all aware, both the town and the county entered into memorandum of understandings for the purpose of providing the most economical, environmentally safe method for the treatment and distribution of drinking water for the county and the town. This contract's scope is for the final design, bidding, and permitting for the water supply improvement projects, to include construction of a new conventional water treatment plant near the existing water treatment plant with a rated capacity of 3.5 million gallons a day, and all the transmission main improvements to be able to move that water back and forth throughout the county. This contract, the total for this contract alone is 1.853 million. This will be, the contract will give the engineers the notice proceeding November 1st, 2020, and then we'll advertise for construction August of 2021. This will be a three-year contract to build up waste treatment plant and all the transmission line. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I know we've been through several meetings with this. I know there's, on the town's agenda, there's a resolution for them to purchase their entire water supply for us, and I think that's tomorrow.
All right. Well, we have had a few meetings on this, and I appreciate Mr. Lambert's leadership. And so, has anybody got any questions for him, any further questions, issues? I would just say this, I don't have a question, but I thank you for your leadership, John, your leadership, the leadership, Mr. Chairman, your leadership in regards to this. There's an unprecedented level of trust now between the municipalities, and that's going to bear fruit for the citizens of Davie County. Not only their pocketbooks, but also jobs, you name it, because it's not just about water, and it's not just about sewer. Those are just manifestations of bigger things that are happening. And I just, it's folks like you, all the staff that are in here, John, that have taken a leadership role, and leadership in those municipalities too, that are open to talk and to seek solution, not territory. You know what I mean? So, I just thank you for that, and this is just another example of it. It's awesome. Well said. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Well, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract of 1.853 million for the engineering aspect of the joint utility design contract. Ms. Finney makes the motion, Mr. Blakely seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd just like to say one thing. I'd like to thank Mr. Eller for the time and effort he's put in behind the utilities. He's really been there with me the whole time, so thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Now, we move to new business, and we have one item before us tonight, and it is to point Robin West as the interim county manager effective tomorrow, October the 6th, at 5:00, as that's when John's will be departing. So, would someone like to make that motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Motion is second. All, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Ms. West, and congratulations. All right. Now, we move to Commissioners' comments, and I'll start with Mr. Poindexter.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make it very brief tonight. I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight to attend our meeting. I especially would like to thank Brent Chove for the time that he's enriched Davie County with his presence. And I'd also like to thank John Eller for the wonderful job that he's done while he's here. Really appreciate you.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, the scriptures say this in Ecclesiastes 4:12. It says, "Though one may be overpowered, two can defend themselves. A cord of three strands is not quickly broken." And when you talk to kids in a team environment, that's talking about team. That's talking about what happens when you work together. And so, John, we'll have a chance to thank Brent, but I want to thank you, because you have come in, and I just wrote these characteristics down, humility, godliness, integrity, character, honor, family. And I think you've brought that to the staff, and not only to the staff, but to this whole county. And I think this board here, they'll speak their appreciation, but you have, you've done a lot to unify us and bring us together. We're sorry to see you leave, but we will be praying for you and wishing you and Amy and your precious children all the best. So, thank you, John.
Ms. Finney?
John, I just want to echo the sentiments of Richard and Mark. You've worked so hard for this county, and harder than most people ever would dream to work in that position, and we just thank you and wish you well, and hope that you and your family just continue to grow and excel and prosper and be blessed in all that you do. I want to congratulate Terry Myers and Steve Moxley on their training and standard certification. As someone who lived through, someone receiving that certification, you just have no idea how much work that is. It's a lot of work, and it's great that the sheriff is encouraging his officers to go through that process. I want to give a shout out to John Gallimore tonight. He is like our silent soldier who always makes things happen, and he's always behind the scenes and not in the limelight, but you do a lot, and we appreciate you, John. Thank you so much. And I'm very glad we got the resolution of life passed tonight. That's awesome, and all of the supporters that came out to support that. And the last thing I want to say, I just want to remember two people. On Saturday, we buried a 20-year fire department veteran, Tony Ray Krennancer, and it was a little overwhelming to see the tribute that his family received as they made the procession from the funeral home to his gravesite, and how the volunteer fire department and other emergency services organizations came out to salute him. And a few days before that, we buried a county employee and my dear friend, Robbie Mills, and today would have been his 51st birthday. And I just want to give a shout out to him and his family.
Thank you. Mr. Blakely?
Hard to follow that, Ms. Finney. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate Officer Myers and Moxley for their great achievement. Obviously, Ms. Finney spelled it out in their commitment in life. It's great. John, thank you so much. Obviously, my tenure's, and Ms. Finney's shorter than the other board members here, but anytime I ever need anything, I put you on the spot, you'd answer it. So, and didn't do that intentionally, but, you know, again, I think you said it really good today in our earlier session, and, you know, you've got a group of great directors and staff here that really go the extra mile. And I think it shows, and I think it shows that they trusted you and your leadership, and I think you helped bring this to the table. But once again, we have some great, you know, we have some great players here in the field that show. So, thank you for what you've done. Wish you the best. If you need anything, please call.
I want to thank everybody for staying around. We've gone a little long tonight, but several things we passed tonight, but I am really excited about our relationship with the municipalities. Mr. Jones, Commissioner Jones mentioned that earlier, and I'm grateful for that. Rick Cross, you're still here, and thank you. John, we're going to miss you. So, best of luck.
And with that?
Appreciate the kind words from the Commission tonight. I thought about breathing through my report, but I think I'm actually going to give it. So, I'll finish strong here. I want to thank the board for allowing us to look at our revenue projections. I know that all of us supported giving the extra coal out to our staff that we wanted to do in July, so thank you for that. We will be moving forward with that, and I think it's important for staff to know how much you appreciate them, and you say it at board meetings, and I appreciate that too, so we will get that done. Ms. West and I will assure that. In addition to that, our sales tax revenue continues to look strong, and so, we're going to keep an eye on that. You know, we're not out of the woods yet, but we're not doing as bad as we thought, as I've mentioned to you in past updates. And so, I think 6:30 of 21 will be telling for us to see how we end up year-end. And we've told the department directors to continue to monitor their budgets, because we don't know what our revenue outlook's going to look like year-end. Thank you tonight for the actions you took for solid waste and for our utilities, just monumental. You know, you look at this stuff on a piece of paper, and you don't think how it's going to impact someone 80 to 100 years downstream. And what you did tonight, and what our staff have done and put their heart and souls into these projects, we've really moved the needle tonight. So, I thank the board for that. I'm very proud of Mr. Myers and Mr. Moxley on their certifications, as all of you've mentioned, and my prayers go out to the Krennancer and Mills families, but also, we have a lot of staff who have sickness in their family right now, and a lot of significant health issues. And so, my prayers continue to go out to them tonight. You heard many proclamations from the Cyber Security Awareness Month, and I'll tell you, Commissioner Finney said this about Mr. Gallimore. When I'm talking to other county managers, and even when I was at a meeting recently, I came back and bragged on John and his staff, because they tried to run a cybersecurity hack on our system just to see if they could get in, and they couldn't. And I came back and told John, good job, because they said they'd never seen that before, in even some of the larger counties with deeper infrastructure. And so, it is Cyber Security Awareness Month. There's a ton of malware and spamming and malicious activity going on, and our staff show up every day in tech solutions and get it done, and they're valuable to us, so we thank John and his team for that. We also, on the consent you passed, the National Family Promise Month, that definitely impacts our families and children who are homeless and struggling, and then also our Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which I know Mr. Byrd and Mr. Pierce and Sheriff Hartman would say, you know, in the midst of this pandemic, we've seen an increase in some of those areas, and those are things we need to keep, definitely keep an eye on, than the resolution that was passed tonight as well. In closing, I do want to give a shout out to our staff who are planning for programming as we continue to move toward reopening. Our library staff, you know, they went from nothing to something again, very quick, and so, we're looking forward to getting them ramped back up and serving our community the way we were pre-pandemic. And then, we also know that, I don't want to leave without saying these last two things, but the census, we're number four in the state of North Carolina. We are the largest rural county in the state of North Carolina at number four. Wake, Union, and Chatham, who we're going to beat between now and October 31st. So, the courts extended that to the 31st, so continuing to get that census count, the completion done, it's going to have a huge impact on us in Davie County. And then, trying to move the needle now with the policy you passed tonight on consent agenda, to have more live streaming of meetings. So, John, thanks for taking the lead on that as well. And then, last but not least, October's going to be a really cool month. We've gotten great feedback from The Park that all of you helped create, and Paul and his staff has been planning for. So, we got some events coming up for pumpkin carvings, just to get people out and connected again, and so, we're putting those things out on Facebook, and I hope all of you will continue to promote the activities in Davie County. So, with that, I want to just end with this. So, four years ago, this work really took a large part of my life, and for me to be satisfied and really want to keep going in the midst of those things, I had to believe that what we're doing here in Davie County was important and even great. And I firmly believe that, and for almost four years now, that's kept me going. I know many of our staff and many of you on this board have given large parts of yourself to this world of public service that we work in. And I've always believed that the only way to be great at what we do is to first love what you do. And I've truly loved what I do, and I love the And I've truly loved what I do, and I love the team that I've been able to do it with. And leaving anything that you love is, it's tearful, and it's sad, and I can say that our staff gave me their all, and I'm going to forever be grateful for that, and I'm always proud of them, and I'm going to call them my teammates until I'm long gone, and even after. And distance isn't going to change that. I was looking back at our accomplishments, and man, how much in four years we've achieved in this organization, and it's a strange feeling in leaving, because I love this team and so many community partners that have made this county so great. I'm going to miss every one of them. I'm also going to miss the person that I am at this time, because I'm not sure if I'll ever be this way again as far as the position that I'm in, or the seat that I sit in. But as hard as it is, I don't want to be sad that it's over, I just want to be able to smile knowing that it happened. So, thanks, board, for taking a chance on me four years ago. People come and go in our lives, but, you know, that's really not the end of the story. That's really just the end of their part in your story. And I've enjoyed writing our chapter together, and while my chapter in this book's going to be closing, there's so many more chapters to follow for this team. Most important thing to tell you is how much I've enjoyed writing this chapter together with them, and I really can't wait to read your book. I just know how lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard, and I couldn't ask for a better team. I'm proud of every one of them for the noble work they do in this work every day. They don't get thanked enough. Every day, we deal with challenges, and they give their hearts and their hands to the work of what we do, and how noble of work that is. But keep doing what you're doing, keep being who you are, the world needs more people like you. And Godspeed to Davie County. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for who you are, and staff, thank you for all the support and love you've shown me for four years.
All right. Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stay moved.
Motion, second, from Mr. Jones. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.